Uh-oh, the boss showed up.
Oh.
And Misty, we are live on YouTube, so just want to pass that on.
Thank you. Three, four, five, six, we have six.
Always right.
Hey Curtis.
Yes.
Yeah.
So everybody's there supposed to be.
Yeah, so far.
Ready to go. Welcome to the Solon Hall University Board of Trustees Full Board Meeting. I will call this meeting in order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Clinton? Shaylee Clinton?
Shaylee. She's there, isn't she?
She's there, she's there, she doesn't show up.
On mute?
Doesn't show up, no. Okay, well, we'll close it off. Curtis?
Present.
Genovese? Gilbert?
Present.
Hightower?
Present.
Sharman?
Present.
Simmons?
Present.
Cedric?
Present.
Walters?
Present.
And Shaylee Clinton, are you on?
I'm here.
Great, thank you. The court is established.
Okay, the next, we're going to close the meeting and go into executive session. I move to close the meeting to the public for the purpose of considering pending probable or imminent court proceedings against or on behalf of the board, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and review of executive session minutes. The relevant section of the Open Meetings Act statute that allow for the closed sessions are five ILCS, one twenty slash two, parent C, parent one, parent eleven, and parent twenty-one. We'll add a second to that motion.
So do.
And moving second, Ms. Whittington, we please call the roll.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Genovese? Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Cedric?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
If motion passes, we're now going to go into executive session. After executive session, we will then resume this board meeting. So we're going to recess to the president's office. I think the board members know what number they need to call for the executive session minutes, or the session. Stand and recess.
Okay. My watch says ten forty-five. We're going, the full board is back in open session. And I will now recess and recontain its conclusion of the board's committee meetings. I do want to report that trustee Genovese has now joined us in our board meeting. So we will now go to the board meetings. The academic matters committee meeting is first. Dr. Hightower, please proceed with the academic matters committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In interest of time, I'm going to ask Dr. Gupchak to deal with the announcements in the 2021 SIU System Distinguished Student Service Awards. Dr. Gupchak.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. As the announcements, I would like to present the status of system strategic plan. So reports from the goal committees outlining the objectives, strategies, and metrics have been received. These draft reports will now be shared with the system strategic planning committee for fine tuning. And it's anticipated that we will have a draft complete by the next VOT meeting. And what I'd like to do is share my screen and present a gist of the objectives that we have received from the goal committees. And please remember that these will go back to the strategic planning committee and be fine tuned. So I will share my screen right now. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So goal one is academic innovation and student success. So the objectives related to academic innovation, student success, deal with an SIU system flex program to increase college degree attainment for the Southern Illinois region. This is where students can take courses at both campuses and it benefits students. To promote entrepreneurial initiatives among students, faculty, and staff, and expand access to high-impact practices for student success and retention. So those are essentially the objectives for the first goal. This goal committee was led by Mark Luer and Scott Collins. The anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion goal is the second goal. The objectives deal with communication, which is to develop a system-wide commitment to anti-racism, diversity, equity, inclusion. Education, which deals with knowledge about anti-racism efforts across the campuses. Equity, diversity, and inclusion infrastructure and organization to support the growth and success of all students, faculty, and staff. And then recruitment retention of underrepresented students, faculty, and staff. So those are the objectives in goal two. And that committee was led by Camille Davidson and Cornell Thomas. The community impact, the third goal theme. The objectives deal with community engagement, to establish an office of community engagement. Rural health, business and economic development to increase SIU systems economic impact by connecting businesses with the university and community resources. Education and workforce development is the fourth objective. And telling the SIU story is a fifth objective in community impact. This committee was led by Linda Baker and Courtney Breckenridge. Goal number four is research, creative activities, and partnerships. And the objectives are to increase the quantity and quality of SIU's research and creative activities, promote system and external partnerships, and then to leverage resources across the system to make collaborating easier, develop public relations mechanisms for research and projects, and to strengthen the current SIUC, SIUE cooperative PhD programs. This committee was led by Jessica Despain and Steven Sheen. Goal number five is faculty and staff. And the objectives deal with staffing, a support to enhance recruitment of diverse faculty and staff, targeted retention plan for faculty and staff with a commitment to appropriate resources that focus on equity and inclusion, and a training plan that supports employee professional development advancement. This committee was led by Teresa Smith and Gertrude Purner Selvam. And the last goal theme is infrastructure. The objectives deal with leveraging technology to support and sustain advanced and advanced SIU system, advocate and lead efforts for environmental sustainability, ensure long-term financial sustainability, and maintain critical infrastructure while anticipating future needs and opportunities. And this committee was led by Steve Huffstettler and Scott Bridges. Again, these objectives and the strategies that go with them and metrics will go to the committee, and they will fine tune them, and we will report more on them.
Okay, my watch says ten forty-five. We're going, the full board is back in open session. And I will now recess and recontinue into conclusion of the board's committee meetings. I do want to report that trustee Genovese has now joined us in our board meeting. So we will now go to the board meetings. The academic matters committee meeting is first. Dr. Hightower, please proceed with the academic matters committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In interest of time, I'm going to ask Dr. Gupchak to deal with the announcements and the twenty twenty-one SIU System Distinguished Student Service Awards. Dr. Gupchak.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. As the announcements, I would like to present the status of system strategic plan. So reports from the goal committees outlining the objectives, strategies and metrics have been received. These draft reports will now be shared with the system Strategic Planning Committee for fine tuning. And it's anticipated that we will have a draft complete by the next VOT meeting. And what I'd like to do is share my screen and present a gist of the objectives that we have received from the goal committees. And please remember that these will go back to the Strategic Planning Committee and be fine tuned. So I will share my screen right now. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So a goal one is academic innovation and student success. So the objectives related to academic innovation, student success, deal with an SIU system flex program to increase college degree attainment for the Southern Illinois region. This is where students can take courses at both campuses and it benefits students to promote entrepreneurial initiatives among students, faculty and staff, and expand access to high impact practices for student success and retention. So those are essentially the objectives for the first goal. This goal committee was led by Mark Luer and Scott Collins. The anti racism, diversity, equity and inclusion goal is the second goal. The objectives deal with communication, which is to develop a system-wide commitment to anti racism, diversity, equity and inclusion. Education, which deals with knowledge about anti racism efforts across the campuses. Equity, diversity and inclusion, infrastructure and organization to support the growth and success of all students, faculty and staff. And then recruitment, retention of underrepresented students, faculty and staff. So those are the objectives in goal two, and that committee was led by Camille Davidson and Cornell Thomas. The community impact, the third goal theme, the objectives deal with community engagement to establish an office of community engagement, rural health, business and economic development to increase SIU systems economic impact by connecting businesses with the university and community resources. Education and workforce development is a fourth objective, and telling the SIU story is 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 a fifth objective in community impact. This committee was led by Linda Baker and Courtney Breckenridge. Goal number four is research, creative activities and partnerships. And the objectives are to increase the quantity and quality of SIU's research and creative activities, promote system and external partnerships, and then to leverage resources across the system to make collaborating easier, develop public relations mechanisms for research and projects, and to strengthen the current SIUC SIUE cooperative PhD programs. This committee was led by Jessica Despain and Stephen Sheen. Goal number five is faculty and staff, and the objectives deal with staffing, a support to enhance recruitment of diverse faculty and staff. Targeted retention plan for faculty and staff with a commitment to appropriate resources that focus on equity and inclusion and a training plan that supports employee professional development advancement. This committee was led by Teresa Smith and Gertrude Purner Selvam. And the last goal theme is infrastructure. The objectives deal with leveraging technology to support and sustain advanced and advanced SIU system, advocate and lead efforts for environmental sustainability, ensure long-term financial sustainability, and maintain critical infrastructure while anticipating future needs and opportunities. And this committee was led by Steve Huffstettler and Scott Bridges. Again, these objectives and the the strategies that go with them and metrics will go to the committee, and they will fine tune them, and we will report more on them by the next meeting. That is, those are my announcements, trustee Hightower.
Wonderful.
I will go on to to talking about the system distinguished student service awards. So I would like to request Diana McGreehan, co-chair of the Student Advisory Committee for the SIU system that we call SACS, to present to the SIU, present the SIU system distinguished service awards. The SACS has worked hard to develop the award, and I am pleased to see them recognize the excellent service that our students across our campuses have rendered to the university and community. Diana, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Hello, my name is Diana McGrand, and I am the co-chair of the SIU System Student Advisory Board. I think we we kind of cross across each other on names there, so I just need to correct myself. And today I'm so proud and so honored to honor the recipients of the inaugural twenty twenty-one SIU System Distinguished Student Service Award. Our selection committee received applications and nominations from all of the schools throughout the SIU system and selected one undergraduate student and one graduate student from both the SIU Edwardsville and SIU Carbondale campuses. In addition, the SSAB also selected one student from each of the following schools, the School of Medicine, the School of Dental Medicine, the School of Law and the School of Pharmacy. These recipients will receive one a one hundred dollar award and a plaque on behalf of the SIU system. I would now love to provide a you agreed and very quickly spoken, so I apologize, highlight of these amazing recipients for accomplishments and their truly distinguishable acts of service. So first, I would like to congratulate and honor Taylor Jean, who is an undergraduate student at SIU Edwardsville. Taylor currently serves as a peer support volunteer within the Public Health Program and was selected to serve the SIU core team. The SIU core team is responsible for working with low-income high school students and first-generation students and to prepare them with resources to excel both in high school and to prepare for college. Taylor is part of the SIU undergraduate research and creative activities program. And through that program, she served as an undergraduate graduate research assistant for the research study exploring the physical and mental effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic among college students. Our next recipient who is here with us today is Madeline McKenzie, who is a graduate student at SIUE Edwardsville. Madeline is currently a graduate assistant in the Center for Student Diversity and serves as a diversity officer for the SIUE student government. She helped develop that diversity and inclusion training effectiveness survey. She has served on several important campus and SIU system search committees such as the Search Committee for the SIU System, Vice President for Anti-Racism, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. And you all might recognize Madeline because she also served as a student panelist in the First Conversation of Understanding sponsored by the SIU System and President Mahoney. Next, I'm very proud to announce Nelson Fernandez. Nelson is an undergraduate student at SIU Carbondale. Nelson has quite literally helped to change the landscape of SIU Carbondale by being the founder and project manager of the SIUC Green Roof Project, who transformed an existing green space into a multidisciplinary innovation hub for expert experimental learning. Some notable accomplishments of the SIU Green Roof Project was the installation of a smart irrigation system on the roofs as well as an installation of temporary wind turbines throughout the campus that embraces renewable energy technology for SIUC. Nelson and his team are leading the charge for sustainability efforts across the campus. Next, I'm also proud to congratulate OJ Duncan, who is a PhD student at SIU Carbondale. In his application, he states that his personal model is be the person you needed when you were younger. OJ is the manager and chair of the board for the Rainbow Cafe LGBTQ Youth Center. He has personally helped hundreds of LGBTQ youth become healthy, young, proud adults through outreach, education and training. He has helped to bring pride to Southern Illinois, both figuratively and literally by being one of the key organizers of Southern Illinois Pride Fest. Next, we have Alexander Warwick. Alexander is a recent graduate from the SIU School of Medicine. Alexander has served in various leadership roles for the Student National Medical Association as well as the president of the SIU School of Medicine Chapter of the SNMA. Alexander has served as a social media chair for the Gay and Lesbian Medical Association and served as a volunteer for white coats for black lives. Alexander has notably served as a student coach for student hot spotting, a program that trains interdisciplinary teams of professional students to learn to work with clients with complex medical and social needs using patient-centered approaches. Next, we have Daniel Assoney, who is a third-year law student at the SIU School of Law. Dan's services to the law school include his participation with the SIU Law Journal, the Mute Court and the Mute Court Board. Dan is an active in student organizations such as the Law Student Democrats, which he will serve as the president for in this upcoming year, and the National Lawyers Guild Social Justice Initiative. During the fall of twenty twenty, Dan was the co-organizer of Also Looky's Vote, an initiative that aimed to get as many local community members as possible registered for the twenty twenty-one presidential election. Next, I'm so proud to announce and honor Nora Abdul Qudore, who is a professional student at the SIU School of Dental Medicine. Over this past year, she developed her own not-for-profit organization called Centralized Application for Advanced Placement for International Dentists Simplified. In its short one-year period as a program, her not-for-profit has already assisted a number of international applicants in achieving admission into multiple U.S. dentistry programs. She is also the community service chair for the Special Care Dentistry Association, which increases the access to oral health care for special needs patients. Justin Shu is a professional student at the SIU School of Pharmacy. He's had a tremendous impact on as a campus leader through his roles as the president of the of the Student Society of Health Systems Pharmacists, the leader, the leadership and development chair of Phi Lambda Sigma Pharmacy Leadership Society and the co-founder of the Industry Pharmacy Organization. And in addition to all of these, Justin volunteers to provide patient care at the St. Louis Chinese Center, which is a free monthly clinic that provides pharmaceutical care to to underserved Chinese-speaking patients from the greater St. Louis area. We had so many wonderful applications and that we didn't want to turn away, and we wanted to honor several other students. So the following students are receiving honorable mentions for their services to their campuses. First is Allison Wayne, who is a professional student at the School of Dental Medicine. Allison is a member of multiple campus organizations which serves to enhance the education and community commitments of the campus such as SIU American Dental Students Association, Give Kids a Smile and Veteran Care Days. Next is Anesh Asokan, who is a professional student at the SIU School of Pharmacy. Initially, served as the class president of the School of Pharmacy since two thousand and nineteen. In addition, he has served as president of the School of Pharmacy, Student Representative Council and the co-president at the Antle Microball Awareness Association. He also serves as the fundraising chair for the American Pharmacists Association Academy of Student Pharmacists and Illinois Pharmacists Association. Amanda Depew is a graduate student at SIU Edwardsville. She was recently named the twenty twenty-one Illinois Student Veteran Leader of the Year by the Illinois Chapter of Student Veterans of America. She was, she has personally made it her mission to support student veterans on the campus of SIUE by co-creating a green zone training program, which helps educate faculty and staff on how to guide students and veterans through their higher education experience. Next, we also have with us Bethany Peppers, who originally graduated with her master's degree from SIU Carbondale. Bethany has spent a career, her career as a as a both undergraduate and graduate student, serving on different roles of student government and multiple campus-wide committees. One of her largest accomplishments was organizing Salukis in Springfield during the legislative lobby day. Next, we have Anna Wilcoxen, who is a PhD candidate on the campus of SIU Carbondale. For the past two years, Anna has served as the president of Graduate Systems United, the graduate, which is the Graduate Student Union at SIUC. During this past year, Anna was the lead negotiator for Impact Bargaining Team for FOMC operations during COVID nineteen. And Anna has had an impactful voice on the working conditions of graduate students on the campus of SIUC. Next, and also joining us is Patrick Murphy. Patrick is an undergraduate graduate student at SIU Carbondale. Patrick is an extremely active student and has served on a variety of organizations and committees. For example, he is the current president of Omega Delta Fraternity. He has served as a senator on USG and was the past president of SIU's United Nations Association and has served and has has had great involvement on both local and statewide elections. Next, we have Vernice Ellen Allen, who recently graduated from SIU Carbondale. She was a chancellor scholar and honor student at the Aviation Flight and Aviation Management Program. In two thousand and eighteen, she founded the SIU chapter of the Organization of Black Aerospace Professionals. She's had a lead role in organizing the first aviation diversity luncheon for the SIU Aviation Program in two thousand and twenty. Alyssa Rohlweiser, who also recently graduated from SIU Carbondale. During her time at SIU, she was an extremely active student as well and was the president of the Student and Alumni Association, the vice executive director of the Student Programming Council, and a member of the Emerging Salukis Leadership Program. In addition, one of her greatest impacts was serving first-generation students through the first Saluki Center. Next, we have Teresa Korak, who also recently graduated from SIU Carbondale. During her time at SIUC, she was the president and co-founder at the American Sign Language Club as well as the chapter president of the National Gay Pilots Association and vice president of the Alpha Eta Rho. In addition, she was the co-founder of the Aviation Diversity Luncheon in two thousand and twenty. Finally, I'd really like to congratulate and thank Tristan for joining us today. Tristan Workman is an undergraduate student at SIU Carbondale. Tristan serves as the president of our Saluki Entrepreneur Core and works at the Illinois Small Business Development Center. He has helped to create our first ever SIU virtual pitch competition in which students pitched their innovative ideas for the opportunity to win seed funding to advance their personal business plans. So thank you to all of our recipients and those receiving honorable mentions for your tremendous dedication to our campuses and our communities. Thank you to all the members of our selection committee, and I'd also like to thank all the students who are able to join us today. And finally, thank you so much, President, Vice President Gupchak and President Mahoney for providing me this opportunity to honor these amazing and outstanding students and all that they have done to serve the SIU system. Thank you.
Let me just pause for just a moment and ask Chair if you would like to congratulate these young people on behalf of the full board.
Absolutely. I tell you that it just warms your heart to know that our our system is producing the quality of the students that they are producing. It is I'm always amazed at the at the intelligence and motivation and the expertise that our students are coming out of our institutions. It's not only attributed to the students themselves, but attributed to the faculty that teaches them. And so I think on behalf of the entire board, we're very, very pleased at these recognition and the accomplishments of these outstanding students.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, President.
Yeah, no, I just was going to add what Chair Gilbert said, just congratulations to all the winners and the and the honorable mentions as well. Just the accomplishments of this group is incredibly impressive, and we thank you for everything that you've done as students and everything you've done for SIU. I could not be more impressed. I also want to thank the Student Advisory Committee again. As a reminder, we formed faculty, staff and student advisory committees just this year and really have only started meeting over the last several months. And in that short period of time, they developed the idea for the awards, the criteria for the awards, went through the whole process and accomplished this. So thank you, Diana, and really the whole group for all that you did on that. I will also say during the search for our vice president for anti racism, diversity, equity and inclusion, they met with the Student Advisory Group and they were incredibly helpful in that process. And so we already are seeing a lot of positive impacts from the formation of the group. We appreciate all that they've done for SIU.
Thank you, Dr. Mahoney, as well as Chairman Gilbert. And unless other trustees have something to say or make comments, I think both of you have said it well. We appreciate the outstanding work that these young people are doing on behalf of the SIU system. Comments from other trustees before we move on.
Well, we can't be more proud of our students listening to today. And I think we need to put it in more into media and say, let the public know what our students are doing. And congratulations to all of you. Being a former faculty member, I know students have their own study to do, and all of that, they do all this extra work. That is the extra effort. So we are so proud of you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Moving on, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held on April twenty ninth?
So moved.
Do we have, do we have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, so signify by hand, aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, caller roll, Miss Dean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hightower.
Yes.
Genovese.
Yes.
Sharla.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business is approval of new programs, reasonable, moderate extensions, approval of off-campus program locations and academic program eliminations and suspensions, July one, two thousand and twentieth through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. This will be a full board agenda, item H, that we will approve. Dr. Gupchak, would you like to cover this area?
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. Item H in the board materials, the annual listing of academic program changes. It's provided here with for your approval. This includes a submission of two tables to the Illinois Board of Higher Education on behalf of Southern Illinois University Carbondale and Southern Illinois University Edwardsville for approval of new programs, reasonable and moderate extensions, approval of off-campus program locations and academic program eliminations and suspensions for the period July first, two thousand and twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. It should be noted that the administrative reorganization at SIU Carbondale is complete and has been approved by the IBHE. SIUC is now working on the required catalog changes and personal appointments.
Anything else for Dr. Gupchak?
That's, that's, that's it, unless there's
Okay, good enough. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second. I'll second it. Please caller roll, Missy.
Tower.
Yes.
Yes.
Sharla.
Yes.
The motion carries. Moving on to item five, creation of Southern Illinois University System Institute for Rural Health and appointment of an interim director, board agenda, item L. And then we have number six, creation of the Southern Illinois University System Office of Community Engagement and the appointment of an interim director, board agenda, item M. This will be, this committee item five and six proposal will be creation of Southern Illinois University System for Rural Health and Southern Illinois University System Office of Community Engagement and the appointment of interim director of each. This is a joint discussion with the finance committee. Dr. Gupchak.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. So presenting item five, first, item five seeks approval for the creation of Southern Illinois University System Institute for Rural Health and the appointment of interim director for the Southern Illinois University System Institute for Rural Health, which we'll call IRH. On the recommendation of the SIU System Rural Health Task Force and subsequently the Institute for Rural Health Committee, the SIU system through the development of the IRH will commit to the understanding of the social determinants of health and resulting barriers and vulnerabilities that impact rural communities. The IRH will be built on a foundation of anti racism, diversity, equity and inclusion, and with the utilization of a cultural competency lens to give effort, to guide efforts that improve community resiliency, health outcomes and individual health and well-being. Jeffrey Franklin, Director of the Center for Rural Health and Social Service Development, will assume additional duties as interim director of IRH. Mr. Franklin has over twenty-seven years of professional experience in project and grant management with special interest in the areas of rural development, coordinated school and health education, bullying prevention, social and emotional learning and youth development. Item six, approval for the creation of Southern Illinois University System Office of Community Engagement and the appointment of interim director for the Southern Illinois University System Office of Community Engagement, which we will call OCE. The purpose of the OCE is to bring the resources of all the SIU system campuses together to better engage with, transform and redevelop underrepresented communities in the SIU system area with a particular focus in small urban communities and based on community need. A working group will determine detailed operations of the OCE focused on the inclusion of community leaders and underrepresented populations in the development and leadership of the OCE. Based on our experience working with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the University of Illinois Chicago on community transformation planning in the metro east region, our work as a research assistant professor at the her work as a research assistant professor at the SIU School of Medicine, Department of Public Health, and her previous work as a community transformation grant program coordinator in Orangeburg, South Carolina, training through the Institute for Translational Research at the University of South Florida. Her certification as HeartSpeak Anti-Racism Facilitator, Dr. Stacy Grundy will assume additional duties as interim director of the OCE. Dr. Grundy received her Doctor of Public Health and Advanced Practice Leadership and her MPH in Health Promotion Behavioral Sciences and her BS in Human Nutrition. She has served as the Director of Health Initiatives for the Springfield Urban League and the WIC Director in Kennet, Missouri. That's my presentation, Dr. Hightower.
Are there comments or questions from any of the trustees, from academic as well as the finance committees?
No, I don't have any comment or questions.
Okay.
Agenda.
Okay, wonderful. Is there a motion to approve committee item five?
I think Trustee Tedrick is saying something.
Oh, okay. I...
Trustee Tedrick, you're on mute.
Dr. Hightower, I think...
Eric?
Yeah.
He's going to hear you.
Okay, Dr. Gupchuk, I have a couple of questions. This, the IRH, of course, we've all looked forward to the creation of this. And I know there's been a lot of work done. And when you relate it to our mission of community service, it doesn't get any better than that. And we're excited about going forward. But I'd like your thoughts, your vision of how we bring our students into this and how we tie the different campuses to this. How do we create academic courses that we can train our students in this enterprise, using this enterprise, and have courses that students from each campus can take? And what's the infrastructure that will deliver that?
So, that's a really good question, Trustee Tedrick. And in the report for the Institute of Rural Health, as well as actually the report for the Office of Community Engagement, students are a key part of this. So, in helping the communities, involving the students in helping the communities or involving the students in projects that will help improve the health of the communities is a key aspect. And one of the things that was considered in the Institute of Rural Health is bringing the strengths of the different campuses together. Could we have faculty and staff from the different campuses develop courses, you know, in, let's say, in rural health, where our students from the different campuses could take those courses? And perhaps even projects where our students from the different campuses can come together with different strengths? And we bring those strengths to the table so we can develop a more enduring solution for our communities? So, absolutely, that's a great point. Involving our students in both rural health projects as well as community engagement projects. You know, the students are one of our biggest assets. And so, getting them involved in these projects would be key. And then, getting the faculty to guide the students in the involvement of these projects would also be a key. So, the Institute of Rural Health Advisory Board and the Office of Community Engagement Advisory Board work on how to incorporate the students as a key element. And so, the details of processes are still to be worked out, but that will be a key element. Did that help?
You bet. That's what we wanted to hear.
Okay, let me, Roger, let me just give you, let me give you a couple of examples of what is occurring right now. Let's just take the Health Initiative, for example. In the Alton, Venice, Madison area, doing the issue with vaccination of getting minority students in. Chancellor Pembroke and his staff working with Connie Spurlock, and I forget the department that she works in, they were able to mobilize their students and to call individuals from this area and set up appointments, work out all of the details so that individuals would not have to register. And we were able to get back vaccine shots into close to 2,000 individuals. This is one example of mobilizing students and getting them in from the ground floor. Also, just recently, we are putting together the revitalization. This is the efforts in Venice, Madison, Brooklyn, East St. Louis, Cogia Heights. We have, again, Dr. Pembroke and SRUE. They are working with these mayors and city leaders to write grants and to try to bring in resources to the area, as was the Office of Engagement. Secondary, Chancellor Lane on the SIU Carbondale and the Architectural Department. The work that they're doing is just simply incredible. They hosted a workshop in East St. Louis on this past Friday, which I attended all day, where they had students working with city leaders and they had close to 50 volunteers from the communities of Venice, Madison, and Brooklyn hoping to strategize on what they envision their communities being. And those same students, under the direction of Dr. Craig Entz from the Architectural Department, they are spending just an enormous amount of time in those communities. So, when we're talking about boots on the ground and energizing students, these are just a couple, three examples that are already in place. And we're, and the critical piece here, and thanks to President Mahoney, the two campuses are working along with the Medical Department at Curtis and Dr. Cruz. We are seeing the three campuses work together as a unit. And this was one of our goals that we started working on from the time Dr. Mahoney came on board. And we're just seeing major dividends of the work that these individuals have put in. So, we look for nothing but just great things coming from these two departments. Those are just examples, Roger.
Good news.
Other comments or questions?
Well, yeah. On that, for especially Tedrick's comment, I certainly see classes, opportunities for classes that would be taken by students across different programs. I think there's great opportunities there as well as the development of new programs and whether that may be certificates, badges, things that are kind of smaller or maybe more extensive programs that will come in the future. And I think this will give us an opportunity to kind of use all the resources of the system to develop more learning opportunities for students and more different types of programs going forward. So, that certainly is part of my long-term vision for where this is going to go.
Doesn't take a lot of imagination to see that that will help student enrollment to grow.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, on Carbondale campus, there used to be Department of Community Development, which was closed almost 30 years back. So, maybe some of these courses probably picked up by Social Work, School of Social Work or something. So, maybe looked into it or some of the courses or whatever is related with these projects are already there on the campus.
You know, let me just, you know, I mentioned Chancellor Pembroke and Chancellor Lane. Let me just give them an opportunity because they have played a major role in helping us to jumpstart this. Comments from you, Chancellor Pembroke?
Thank you, Trustee Hightower. As you know, you've heard me talk a lot about the Successful Communities Collaborative, and that's kind of was the beginning of this idea for us, where students were out in the communities where they were taking the skills that they had learned, whether it was in pharmacy or nursing or business, and really trying to help communities address the problems that they were encountering. And so, this, I think this new office is a logical extension. And I believe strongly that our students should be in the communities if for no other reason than it gives the community a chance to see the amazing young people, but also a chance to engage them in a way so that they may stay in our communities, seek employment, and use their educations in a way that benefit our areas.
Chancellor Pembroke, let me just engage you just a little bit moment because I think we're driving, we want to drive home the important work that both, that all of our campuses are doing in this area. Would you talk about how you guys, briefly, how you guys are working with the new collaboration in Cogia Heights from a governmental point of view? Would you just touch on that briefly, please?
So, as you well know, and to explain to others, communities sometimes go through processes where there is more strength in terms of joining communities. And so, when they do that, there are questions about access to grants to support the kinds of things they're doing, but also just organizational structures in terms of how to create new municipal governing organizations. And so, we have been trying to help Cogia Heights as it relates to those documents around creating city charters, models of officers that would be able to lead effectively and to help them if they need to have expertise in writing grants pertaining to funding for everything from sewer projects to fire departments to police organization, et cetera. So, I think our public administration, our history folks are trying to help provide that kind of expertise to those city governments.
And then, I'll come, Chancellor Lane, let me give you the same opportunity because of what Craig Entz and some of the others are doing in Carbondale as well as in our area, if you will, please.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Hightower. What a great opportunity. I know sometimes we get accused of just being physically located in our communities, but not really ingrained and connected to those communities. I think this is a perfect example of how to be connected. One of the pieces that I know our folks are excited about is the service learning opportunity. And I think Trustee Sharma was really kind of touching on some of that earlier is that our students will be able to not only learn about these things, but actually get their hands dirty and be out into the community and really testing their skills out and then offering their services to some degree. A final piece for us, it's exciting. I know the Illinois Board of Higher Education is really focused on a couple of areas that these projects or these positions will definitely be right in line. They're focused on rural students, African-American students, Hispanic, Latinx students, and low-income students. And so, I can only imagine what these positions are going to touch in those areas to help those communities. And so, just excited to be a part of it. And thanks to each of you, President and the board, for recognizing that. And I think it's going to be a great, great thing for us.
Dr. Cruz? Yes.
Dr. Hightower, I'd just like to add because the... With the Institute for Rural Health and the Office of Community Engagement, you're seeing a collaboration between our campuses that has, between our faculty and staff and even students that has not existed in a long time in our system, if it has ever existed. And it is going to make the system stronger. We, as a institution, serve not only to educate and serve our students, but we are also here to serve our communities and support our institutions. And you're going to, this will, I think, no doubt, will improve enrollment in the future when these communities see the outreach that we have to help them. It's going to help these communities thrive. It's going to help our students when they are working with these communities. And as I said, this is a collaboration that, between our various campuses, that has not existed, I think, ever.
Thank you. Dr. Cruz, you've been instrumental from day one. Comments from you, as you've played a major role?
Well, thank you. You know, I would just say that this is a perfect opportunity to engage faculty members, students, and our partners. And we hope that new programs, new degree programs, even potentially a school of rural public health grow out of this. And, you know, the example that I would give at the School of Medicine is that several medical students, a group of about 20 with a faculty member, in conjunction with our hospital partners, Generous Funding, started a hot-spotting program and a program of community assessment that allowed us to respond quickly to have pandemic health workers during the pandemic. And, you know, just expanding on the Metro East area, we were able to use the model that we developed in Quincy. We applied it there in conjunction with the School of Nursing at SRUE and Southern Illinois Healthcare Foundation to get the mobile van testing. And then, obviously, you mentioned the vaccination program that SIU followed up with that. Things like that will happen more easily and more quickly, and we'll have the backbone and the foundation to do it.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone. Other comments? If not, we'll...
Trustee Hightower?
Yes.
Just one thing, and I think it builds on the comments you've heard so far. Want to be clear with everybody, we're not new to supporting rural health or community engagement. We've been doing this for a long time, and a lot of people have done fantastic work. Dean Cruz just talked about some of the work that they've been doing. Chancellor Pembroke talked about the successful community collaboratives that Connie Fray Spurlock has been leading. We have people doing fabulous work already. Really, what we're trying to do is bring the system together and take this to another level and become a national model. So, this is not new for us. It's just taking it to a different level.
Thank you, President Mahoney, for just bringing it all together. Well said. Is there a motion to approve committee item number five?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, other questions or comments? Madam Secretary, please caller roll.
The Academic Matters Committee members, Hightower?
Yes.
Genovese?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And for Finance Committee members, Tedrick?
Yes.
Curtis? And Sharma?
Yes.
Okay, I think the motion passed. Okay. Let's move to item number six. I think we've had all of the discussion. Is there a motion to approve committee item number six?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
For Academic Matters Committee, Hightower?
Yes.
Genovese?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
For Finance Committee members, Tedrick?
Yes.
Curtis? And Sharma?
Yes.
The motion passes both committees, and the committee item six is approved. Number seven, Dr. Gupchuk, Physicians Assistance Program, Lincoln Scholars and Doctor of Medical Science.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hightower. So, we are happy to have today with us Dr. Don Deemer and Dr. Jacob Ribbing, Maddie Nelson, who's a Lincoln Scholar student, and Sammy Stats, a Physician Assistant student. Welcome and thank you for taking the time from your busy schedules to be here today. Before they get started, I would like to further introduce Doctors Don Deemer and Jacob Ribbing. And if you could introduce your students before you start, that would be wonderful. Dr. Deemer is the Director of the Physician Assistant Program, serving in this capacity since 2010. Previously, he was Associate Director at Texas Tech University PA Program. He also served in active duty with the United States Air Force from 1983 to 2006, where he was a physician assistant and worked in family practice medicine and emergency medicine. Thank you, Dr. Deemer, for your patriotism and 23 years of military service. He earned his bachelor's degree in education from SIU, a bachelor's and master's degree in PA Studies from the University of Nebraska, and a doctoral degree in health science from AT Still University. Dr. Jacob Ribbing is Director of the Doctor of Medical Science Program and Assistant Professor. Previously, he was a full-time clinical PA practicing... Previously, he was a full-time clinical PA practicing family medicine. And medication assistant treatment in Southern Illinois. He also serves on the Illinois Academy of PA's Board as a Regional Director for Southern Illinois. Dr. Ribbing earned a bachelor's degree in radiologic science from SIUC. A master's degree in physician assistant from SIUC and a doctor of medical science from the University of Lynchburg. Thank you, Dr. Deemer and Dr. Ribbing and the students for preparing a presentation for the board today. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much for that. We're grateful for the opportunity. Today to come and talk to you all about our programs a little bit. The SIUPA program is a seven semester intensive medical education program. Our mission is to prepare healthcare professionals to provide primary care to underserved populations in rural. And health profession shortage areas, especially in southern and central Illinois. Since we started the program in 1999. Over 60% of our graduates are practicing in rural and underserved areas now, which is. Third highest among all PA programs. The PA profession is a pretty popular profession right now. U.S. News and World Report ranked the PA as the number one job in America this year. And our program gets around 1,200 applicants for the 40 seats that we have. Some other highlights of our program include our student performance, program performance and our development of new programs recently. In 2017, the last time we went through accreditation, we received the maximum 10-year accreditation from ArcPA, which is a very difficult accrediting body. At that time, I believe there were more than 20 PA programs who were on probation from that accrediting body. So it's not easy to get the maximum amount of years from them. Our students are always excellent. They maintained a 100% first time board pass rate and perform at about. 50 points above the national mean on board exams. Each year, there is a competition amongst PA programs. It's called the Challenge Bowl. It's kind of like. Jeopardy with on medical topics, but every program has a team of students that represent them at the state and national level. The state tournament start started in 2014. And SIU has won that in 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19. We didn't play in 20 and 21 due to COVID restrictions. And then we won the national championship in Las Vegas in 2017 against more than 100 other. PA programs and we've made it to the championship round every year that we've that we've played in that. Our graduates, in addition to increasing access to and quality of care. For our communities have taken on many leadership roles, including many presidents and officers of our state and national organizations. And recently, and you'll hear more about this in a bit, we developed a doctoral degree program for PAs called the Doctor of Medical Science Program. And there are only six other programs like this in the country, and this is the first one that's at a public university. And to combat the physician shortage in rural and southern Illinois. Dr. Cruz came up with a plan to have a group of medical students stay in Carbondale. For the duration of their medical training instead of one year in Carbondale. And the last three years in Springfield and hopes that this would result in some of those medical students. That receive all their training in southern Illinois, staying here and practicing. To help make that happen, the PA program worked with the medical school curriculum directors. To develop a combined curriculum for the PA and the medical students. That first group of medical students called the Lincoln Scholar Students just finished their first year. Studying alongside with the PA students interprofessionally. And this is the first program of its kind in the country. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all and now. I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Ribbing and then he'll introduce our first. Our Lincoln Scholar Student and then the Lincoln Scholar Student will introduce the PA student who also will talk to you all for a minute. Again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jacob?
Yes, hello, everyone, and thank you for joining me. Thank you for the introduction. I am the Director of the New Doctor of Medical Science Degree here at the PA Program. The Doctor of Medical Science Degree is officially launched. Our inaugural class started on June 1, 2021. They are currently in their seventh week of coursework. We already have received a ton of positive and very excited feedback from the students. And the faculty thus far have been simply excellent. For those of you who are unfamiliar. This is a doctorate degree that is exclusive to PAs. It is a 12-month continuation of PA education after completion of the entry-level master's degree. As Don or Dr. Deemer was pointing out, there are only six other DMSC programs in the country currently. And we are proudly the very first and currently only DMSC program at a public university. We set a goal for ourselves to have 40 students in our first year. And fortunately, we surpassed this goal, starting with an even 50 students. And several more that have chosen to defer to a later start date. We plan to have a second cohort starting this spring, '22, so this January. I am very optimistic in regards to the demand for PA doctorate education. Expansion and optimization of this degree over the next five years. And I'm very proud that SIU PA Program has assumed a leadership position in PA education in this way. At this time, I would like to pass things along to a Lincoln Scholar Student. Maddie Nelson is the representative from the second-year Lincoln Scholars Class. And she's going to speak a bit about the program and her experiences so far. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Like you said, my name's Maddie. I'm one of the six students from the first ever Lincoln Scholars Class. So we're currently in the beginning of our second year, which we started in June. So this is the year of our clinical rotations. Next week, we'll be wrapping up the first of our seven, seven-week rotations. So these include internal medicine, neurology, emergency medicine, pediatrics, OB-GYN, surgery, and psychiatry. And since our program has a focus on family medicine and rural underserved communities. We've also been working in primary care clinics every Tuesday afternoon since this last July. And we'll continue to do so our whole time here at SIU. So I feel that our interprofessional education with the PA Program. And the PA students during our first year has helped us out so much with our clinical skills. As a lot of you know. Students don't get a lot of clinical experience before their third year, but in this program, we were able. To start learning our physical exam skills and working with physicians and other providers during our very first weeks of school last year. So each unit, we also got a new PBL group where we were incorporating Lincoln Scholar Students with the PA students. And so we were able to use information from our lectures and work together to problem solve various PBL cases. So that mirrors how we will work together in a clinical settings as. Providers working with physicians and PA students together. My classmates and I have already gotten so many compliments from our physician preceptors about how far ahead. Our clinical reasoning skills are compared to a lot of other medical students at this point in their education. And I'm confident that the reason for this is our hands-on, problem-based learning. And collaboration with the staff and students in the SIUPA Program. And as a current update, we just accepted eight new students, new first-year students, and they began this past June, this June. And today they're starting their mentor clinics as well. So they're gonna go ahead and start. With their clinical experience and I'm confident that they'll. Gain a ton of knowledge during their first year as I did and my classmates did. So now Sammy Stats, one of my classmates from the PA's class, is going to talk about her experiences.
Hi, my name is Sammy Stats. I'm a Phase Two Physician Assistant Student. I was part of that first class in the PA Program that was incorporated with the Lincoln Scholar Students. Currently, the Physician Assistant Students just took our first end-of-rotation exam. And we just started on Monday our second clinical rotation. Within our program specifically, the PA and Lincoln Scholars worked together. Mainly that first year of our education, learning that general knowledge foundation of the human body. And every day we work together, whether that be in our problem-based learning groups, our small groups, lectures, skills. And just studying together. I think in our problem-based learning groups, we really learn to. Respect each other's perspectives and use that to our advantage to solve our own problems. We also begin to learn the responsibilities of each other. And learn how to work together and communicate with our own individual skills that we can later on use in practice. So I think this program where it's integrated with the PA and Lincoln Scholar Students. I think that it's an interactive learning environment and that allows for a comfortable setting for us to really get to know each other. And learn to communicate with each other rather than being in a new work setting and trying to learn that. Way of working together in a team-based care practice, I mean. While I don't really have anything to compare to, like I've never been in a program. That has this type of integration before, I think it's going to be very effective for us. Whether it be Physician Assistant Students or Physician Students as future providers. Because in healthcare, we will always be working with other disciplines, not just ourselves. And I think to really make that team-based practice effective, we need a.
Lou.
Sammy, I think we can. We lost your voice, Sammy.
Just brought her over here. Maybe that'll work. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, just to finish up, I was going to say that. I can only imagine that when starting in the healthcare setting as a new provider. You have a lot of stress and a lot of new things going on. So I think. Having that skill set to work in a team-based care already and having those skills to do that. Will put us at a great advantage and can also like ultimately lead to patient satisfaction. Thank you.
Dr. Gupchuk, anything else?
No, that's it. And I'm very proud of our Physician Assistant Students and also proud of all the students who got the awards. So thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you. Dr. Deemer, thank you for the outstanding work that you continue to do. In the with the Physicians Assistance Program and to the two students who presented today. Thank you for your outstanding work. If there is no other business before the Academic Matters Committee, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. The next meeting is the Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Tedrick, may proceed.
The Finance Committee meeting is now in session. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting held April 29, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
Tedrick?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And the minutes are approved. The next items on our agenda are item two and three, which have already been discussed with the Academic Matters Committee, so we'll pass over that. And. Items four through eight. Propose approvals of salary and appointment for positions at SIUC. So Chancellor Lane, can I have you speak to each of these items?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Tedrick. This matter presents for approval for the salary and appointment of Wendell Williams. As Associate Chancellor of Enrollment Management. Mr. Williams led the development of a comprehensive multi-year strategic enrollment plan. And oversee the oversee the offices of admissions, financial aid, and the registrar's office. He holds a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in rehabilitation counseling from Arkansas State. Has over 30-plus years' experience in higher education and served in administrative roles at Mid-South Community College, Grayson College, Lone Star College. And most recently, the Texas Southern University, where he had leadership roles in student affairs and enrollment services. Utilized the services of Whit Kiefer and Mr. Williams was one of four finalists from our national search for this position. All candidates interviewed with the Campus Search Committee, Enrollment Management Staff, Student Ambassadors in Admissions. The Chancellor's Cabinet, the Dean's Council, Faculty Senate, Graduate Council, Ad Act Committee. That's a mouthful. And the University's Enrollment Management Task Force. I respectfully submit this matter for your consideration.
Can you move on to five and then we'll vote on them all together?
Yes. This matter presents approval. This is for the Vice Chancellor for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. For the approval of our new Vice Chancellor, hopefully Paul Frazier in that role. Dr. Frazier earned four degrees from Texas Tech University, including a Doctor of Education in 2010. Since 2018, he has served as Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer at the University of South Alabama. He was previously the Assistant Vice President for Institutional Diversity, Equity, and Community Engagement at Texas Tech University. From 2013 to 2018, served a number of years in K-12 institutions. Dr. Frazier was one of three finalists who interviewed for the position following a national search. All candidates interviewed with the Campus Search Committee, staff within the Vice Chancellor Division, the Chancellor's Diversity Task Force. In a virtual open forum available to all campus stakeholders. Moving on to number six, this is for the approval of salary and appointment for the Dean, College of Agricultural Life and Physical Sciences. This is for Dr. Eric Brebick as the Dean of the College of Agricultural Life and Physical Sciences. University conducted a national search for this position that resulted in five candidates being interviewed. Dr. Brebick earned his PhD from Iowa State University and holds a master's degree from the University of North Dakota. He has been on faculty at Dickinson State since 2007, where he served as Department Chair of Natural Sciences. From 2012 to 2019 and was most recently a professor of geology and soils. He participated in open forums with students, faculty, and staff in the college. And interviews with the Search Committee, Provost, and myself. Moving on to number seven, for the salary and appointment of the Dean of the College of Health and Human Sciences. This is for Dr. Robert Morgan to serve as that dean. University conducted a national search for this position, resulting in six candidates being interviewed. Dr. Morgan earned a PhD from Oklahoma State University and holds a master's degree from Fort Hayes State University. He has been on faculty at Texas Tech for more than 20 years and most recently held an endowed professorship in psychology and served as the department chair. He has also spent more than a decade as Director of Forensic Services and Director of Postdoctoral Fellowship Program in the Forensic Psychology. Department at Texas Tech University. All candidates participated in open forums with students, faculty, and staff in the college and interviews with the Search Committee, Provost, and myself. Number eight, the approval of salary and appointment for the Interim Dean for College of Arts and Media. This is for Dr. Sugun Ojuui as the Interim Dean for College of Arts and Media. He holds an MFA in Directing from Yale University and a Master's of Art in Theater Arts from the University of Ibadan. He joined SIU Carbondale in 2004 as Assistant Professor in Department of Theater and earned a full scholarship, a full professorship rather, in 2016. He also was named Interim Chair of the Department in 2019. He's been a Managing Artistic Director for SIU's McLeod Summer Playhouse since 2019. There's a two-time Carnegie-Africana Last-Borah Fellow at the University of Ibadan, 2015, 2017. University invited all current tenured faculty in the college and its academic schools to self-nominate for consideration for the interim dean position. All nominees participated in a selection process which included open forums with students, faculty, staff, and the college. And interviews with the Provost and myself. So I respectfully submit these items for your consideration.
Thank you, Chancellor Lane. Does anybody have any questions or is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion for the Finance Committee to approve Committee Items? Hearing none, is there a motion for the finance committee to approve committee items four through eight? Is it moved and seconded?
Yes.
Okay, madam secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
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 Committee items four through eight have been approved. Number nine and committee items nine and 10 propose approval approvals of salary and appointment. And title change at the school of medicine, Dean Cruz, will you speak to this?
Yes, I will, thank you, item T is for approval of salary and appointment of Marcella Bland as administrative director of the neuroscience institute. Which encompasses the departments of psychiatry and neurology and the division of neurosurgery. She will replace the retiring administrative director. She was hired for one month as associate administrative director after a national search. And. She'll she will begin as at the departure of the current administrative director into that into that role. She is a highly qualified internal candidate, Marcella Bland. Item U is a title change for Mary Stewart, who is we're seeking to be named the executive director of clinical operations at the SIU School of Medicine. She previously was the executive director of patient engagement. This item actually seeks to correct an administrative oversight. From July 2019, when we thought this was a simple promotion, but it actually requires a board action. It's more than just a promotion, so she's been functioning in this role since July of 2019 and doing an excellent job. And we just seek to correct that oversight, so those are my two.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Need a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, we need a motion to approve items nine and 10.
So second.
Misty?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And committee items nine and 10 are approved. Item 11 is approval of salary, head football coach SIUC, Dr. Lane?
Thank you, trustee Tedrick, this matter presents for approval of the salary for Nick Hill as head coach of the Suluki football team. Following a national search, Nick Hill was selected as head coach back in 2016 and has diligently worked to put the program on a path for success. After three rebuilding seasons, Hill has put together two winning seasons that have included. Being ranked nationally, making the playoffs for the first time since 2009 and advancing to a nationally broadcast quarterfinal appearance. This request is brought forward using funds in an account at the SIU foundation that have been raised to support the football program. Will be sustained through donor driven activities in future years as we extend his contract through the 2025 season. Respectfully submit this matter for your consideration.
Thank you, Chancellor, is there any discussion? Any questions? Is there a motion for this committee to approve this item?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
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 Committee item 11 is approved. Committee item 12 proposes approval of a salary and appointment of head women's basketball coach at SIUE, Chancellor Pembroke.
Thank you, Chair Tedrick, this time we request approval for the salary and appointment of the head women's basketball coach for the SIUE campus. We propose Samantha Quigley Smith as the sixth head women's basketball coach at SIUE. She was decorated player at DePaul University. She also served four years as the head coach at Lewis University compiling a record of eighty-three and thirty-four. She was the Great Lakes Valley Conference Coach of the Year in 2021. Prior to that, Smith served as the head coach at St. Francis University, where she was the youngest head coach in the nation at twenty-two years of age. She went to the NAIA final four and led her team to sixty-two and seven record in her final two seasons at St. Francis. They finished the 2017 season ranked number one in NAIA. She also has been involved the USA Women's Basketball, serving as an assistant coach and as part of a medal winning team, both the FIBA American and European Championships. We conducted a national search at fifty-seven qualified applicants, eight were offered first round interviews and we had three finalists. So at this time, it gives me great pleasure to recommend Coach Smith and I recommend this matter to the president and the BOT.
Thank you, is any discussion or any questions? Do I have a motion to accept?
I'm moved.
So second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
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 And committee item 12 is approved. Committee items thirteen and fourteen propose additional purchase authority and a purchase at SIUC, Dr. Lane, would you present?
Yes, thank you, trustee Tedrick, this matter seeks approval to increase the purchase authority for underarmored athletic apparel for the time period of July 1, 2017. Through June 30, 2020. The original contract was approved in 2017 with the anticipation of spending about five hundred thousand per year on athletic apparel. And related project products such as footwear, equipment and accessories. After the contract was entered, the university added a sport that was women's soccer. That was not calculated in the anticipated expenditures. More notably, however, is that during the course of the contract, which stands about three. Actually about three athletic directors, again, all the way back to 2017, the department had two fiscal years where purchases were higher than the anticipated average expenditures. Pleased to report, we now have a process to control spending related to the underarmored contract that will be monitored. By our AD and our financial folks here, our CFO or interim CFO. These changes are part of the overall athletic budget reduction plan that we put in place. To really monitor this in this in this upcoming year, so respectfully submit this matter for your consideration.
You want to move to the to Y?
Yep. This matter seeks approval to purchase seven new Garmin G1000 equipped Cessna 172S aircraft for the School of Aviation. College of Health and Human Services. The estimated purchase price for the price of the seven planes is about 3.1 million. We are all proud to be called home of the Flying Sulukis who are based in the School of Aviation, which offers comprehensive flight education. To prepare professional pilots to meet the current and future demands of the aviation industry. The nine time national champion Flying Sulukis finished third in the National Intercollegiate Flying Association Title Competition in May of 2021. Marking the tenth straight time the team has finished in the top three in the nation. This record of success and an increasing national interest in the career field, the aviation flight program. Needs to add and upgrade its fleet of aircraft. Five of the current planes have essentially achieved the end of their useful life, both by years in service and hours of flight time. As such, replacing these planes and adding two additional planes to the fleet is essential to continue the outstanding success in enrollment for the program. Notably, funding for the purchase of these aircraft will come from flight fees generated by the program. Which can only be used for reinvesting in the program. Thanks to a well managed program, there are sufficient funds to cover the cost of the new planes without requiring financing of any kind. The full payment for each plane is due upon its delivery to campus, which is anticipated to happen next summer. Just in time for the fall 2022 semester. Incredible program, definitely to stay competitive, it's something that's that's definitely much needed, I respectfully submit this matter for your consideration.
Thank you, Chancellor Lane, I have a couple of questions, going back to item 13 first, just again, what is the contract dates? What are the contract dates?
June 7, we had July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2022.
Okay, thank you, and then the second thing on item number Y, those of us that have been. Fortunate to fly on university planes are pretty happy to see these new planes. I know they're much needed and we're proud of that program, I'm just glad to see it, I may never fly on them again, but. I know it is needed, all right, is there any other discussion?
Move approval?
Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
All right, madam secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
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 And that these items are approved. All right, committee item 15 proposes approval of purchase digital photocopy equipment at SIUE. Vice Chancellor Taylor, will you speak to this item?
Thank you very much, we seek approval, excuse me. Toward a contract for leasing office machines, photocopying, printing, scanning and additional functions. The estimated seven year cost for these services is 1.3 million or between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand per year. The actual amount of the contract will be based on the annual needs for the services. The RFP SIU. And we recommend Watts Copying Systems located in Springfield, Illinois as a supplier for the Edwardsville, Alton and East St. Louis campuses. We I respectfully submit this and seek your approval from the board and we'd have to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, do I have any discussion or any questions? Is there a motion for the committee to approve this item?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
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 And the item is approved. Committee item 16 proposes a purchase of digital media buying services at SIUE, Dr. Pembroke.
Thank you, Chair Tedrick, this matter seeks approval to award a contract for the management of digital media buys. And optimization for online video, streaming radio and other forms of digital advertising. The estimated cost for these services is 4.8 million over the life of the contractor, 1.2 million per year. As a result of the RFP, we are recommending Real Eyes Media LLC, Wentzville, Missouri. To provide professional services for digital buys, the Edwardsville, Alton, East St. Louis campuses. The vendor will provide strategic counsel and media planning. All services will be funded by the Department Advertising and Marketing Fund. At this time, I make this recommendation to the president and board of trustees.
Thank you, Chancellor, is there any discussion? Is there a motion for the committee to approve this item?
So second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote. Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
This item is approved by the committee, there's no further business before the finance committee, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Tedrick, Dr. Hightower, I'm going to ask you to reconvene the academic matters committee meeting, there's. An item that slipped through the cracks that had to be the recommendation for the distinguished service award to SIUE. That has to go through the academic affairs committee before the board can approve it. I think Dr. Pembroke is prepared to speak to that to that item.
I I I see that now, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would like to reconvene academic matters committee. And address the 2021 SIU system distinguished student service awards. Do we need to have a roll call on that, is it okay if we just go from there, Mr. Attorney? Okay. Madam Chair, may we call a roll on this, please?
Do we make a motion first?
I I no, I'm asking, do we?
Does Chancellor Pembroke want to, do you want Chancellor Pembroke to speak to it before you? You're fine, you're fine.
Okay, fine, fine, so at this time, Chancellor Pembroke, would you like to speak to this area?
Thank you, trustee Hightower, at this time, we request approval from the board of trustees to bestow the distinguished service award to Donna Richter. On our December 2021 SIUE commencement. Donna has been in many administrative roles at the Southern Illinois Builders Association over a forty year career. She has served the community well and has also served on several not for profit boards. In 2015, she was a chief appointed chief executive officer of CBA. She has helped so many of our construction management students in many ways, including scholarships and providing safety training. She has been an active member of the Leadership Council of Southeast Illinois, Cascasia College and SWIC Construction Department Advisory Committee, Regional Chamber Leadership. St. Louis Business Journal appointed her, nominated her, named her in 2019 as most influential businesswoman. So at this time, it gives me great pleasure based on the recommendation of SIUE's committee for honorary degrees. And distinguished awards to present Donna Richter to you for this recognition.
Thank you, Chancellor Pembroke, may we have a motion?
Oh moved.
May we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, would you please call a roll? Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Misty, one thing, let me just clarify as well, get clarification, this item will be item number N, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion second and the motion approved to to add item N to the full agenda. This concludes the academic matters committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower, okay, the full board meeting has now been reconvened. I would like to welcome a new student trustee Shaylee Clinton and Fanny Walter Walters to their first full board meeting. I hope I get to see you folks in person, I know the SIUE student trustee last year because of the pandemic, I never personally was able to. To to meet them. But welcome to the to the SIU board of trustees. The first item of business is to make appointments for the new trustees to serve as members on the board committees. Ms. Clinton, you will serve as a member of the architectural design committee and the finance committee. And Ms. Walters, you will serve as a member of the academic matters committee and the audit committee. I would like to announce that during today's executive session meeting, the board approved the release of executive session minute excerpts. For the period of December 2020 through April 2021. Those will be posted for public inspection on the board's website tomorrow. The next item of business is approval of the minutes of the meeting of the board held on April 29th of this year. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Clinton, please call the roll.
Yes. Genovese? Yes. Curtis?
Yes, sorry.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Tedrick?
Yes.
Walters? Yes.
The minutes are approved. With regard to trustee reports, are there any trustee reports, I don't I don't have any. I don't think there are any, and then the next for the committee reports. I'll report that the executive committee has not met between board meetings. The next item on the agenda is the executive officers' report. President Mahoney, will you present your report for the SIU system?
Thank you, Chair Gilbert, just a few items I'll cover today. First thing is normally by this point, we will have had the audit and gone through review of that, I will say that just got in yesterday, so wasn't able to get on the agenda for this meeting, but will be on the agenda for the September meeting. It's been a little bit delayed this year, as a lot of things have been a little bit different than normal years, but again, we did get that finally yesterday. The strategic plan, just to reiterate what Dr. Gopchak presented earlier, that they're making progress and moving forward and really a good collaboration between different parts of the system. But if you look at the agenda today, many of the items, a number of the items we approved actually related to different initiatives and those agenda in that strategic plan already. Including the Office for Community Engagement, Institute for Rural Health and several other things are all tied in there together, so. We are moving forward on a lot of those things even as we're going through that strategic. So we are moving forward on a lot of those things, even as we're going through that strategic planning process. Just quick budget update, we've now finished the fiscal year '21. It'll take us a while before we really know exactly where we ended up at the end of last year, but that will say certainly better than we expected to be when we sat here a year ago. Things have done better from, for a number of different reasons. Certainly, the funding from the state staying flat as opposed to declining as it did in some states was helpful. The three fat rounds of COVID relief funding from the federal government has been particularly helpful in our financial situation, as well as giving us the opportunity to help probably over 10,000 students across the SIU system with different financial support. So we're thankful for that, as well as our improving enrollment trends, which the Chancellors will update you on just coming up and what we're seeing for next year. And frankly, good management of the budget at each level, as we talked about last year, putting in contingencies and holding on expenses in a variety of areas has put us in a good position. So again, much better place than we thought we'd be in at this time last year. But again, we'll have a more accurate assessment of that when we get to the September meeting. The next thing I would say kind of related to that, and let the Board know this again, our bond rating has improved standard of poor completed the review of our credit rating, and has raised us from BP plus to BB, B minus, which puts us in the stable range. That's a very good sign. They cited a number of reasons for that upgrade, including some of the things I just talked about, solid operating performance during the pandemic, improvement in enrollment trends, a healthy balance sheet, declining debt level, and support from the stimulus funding. So again, thank you to both leaders at the federal and state level for the support that they've given us during this difficult period, but also thank you to all of the employees, and be far too many to list, who did the right things and managed our budget well and made good decisions that put us in, again, a better financial position and helped us to improve that credit rating. Related to COVID relief funding, another thing that will provide a benefit, and benefit particularly, I think, for our students going forward. I said on the P20 council, and one of the things they have been focused on is the lost learning for students at the K-12 level. So there's now an Illinois tutoring initiative that will be supported by COVID relief funding that will allow learning renewal, it's a part of the Learning Renewal Resource Guide, but will allow high-impact tutoring practices focusing on one-on-one and small group tutoring. And the tutors that they will be using will be students from various universities, including those in the SIU system. So those tutoring will be students in our tutor, teacher education programs, as well as other higher education students. So allow them a really great learning experience, but also providing support for students in K-12 education to make up some of what was lost during the pandemic. There are actually six participating institutions in six service areas, and the SIU system is one of those six, and SIUE is in Area Five, and SIUC in Area Six. So we'll be supporting schools in, in both of those areas. The expectations will partner with eight school districts by the end of this year, and fifteen school districts by the end of year two. We'll be involved with hiring, training those tutors, coordinating the tutoring, and collecting data on impact. This will bring to the SIU system a little over a million dollars this year and $2 million next year. But again, all of that will go to support that program, and segments for the students will be tutoring as well as directors and things like that. So again, exciting project. Illinois State University is the statewide project coordinator, but we're happy to be part of that initiative. While it wasn't one of our approval items today as far as new staff, I do want to point out Dr. Sheila Caldwell, our new Vice President for Anti-Racism, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion starts this next Monday. So it will be her first day in the office in Springfield. Will still be joining me where I am now physically located. So I have now moved officially to Springfield last Friday, and I'm working out of that office. But this week, I actually came to Carbondale last night, and I'll leave tomorrow to go to Edwardsville to meet with Chancellor Pembroke on Friday. And so my commitment is to continue to try to have a presence in all three places throughout the years ahead. But happy to have an opportunity to do that. It'll get me out of the office a lot, which I've spent far too much time in the office in the last fifteen months. So I am very happy to be out on the road and getting out of the office as much as possible. Just a quick update, too, on the SIUE Chancellor search. Again, I charged the committee on June 30th. We got the committee working. They're working with Whit Kiefer on a position profile, and Whit Kiefer has begun the process of recruiting candidates for that position. Again, our target optimally will be to have a name of a candidate ready for approval at the December meeting of the Board of Trustees, but we seem to be moving forward well on that process. So that is my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of President Mahoney? Hearing none. Chancellor Lane?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and appreciate the opportunity to update the Board. Thank you, President Mahoney. I want to first welcome Shaylee. Shaylee and I have had a chance to meet. She's got a great agenda and look forward to working with her this year, this upcoming year. But Shaylee, congratulations, and really look forward to working with you. Before I jump right in, I know we're putting our slides up here, a beautiful shot of Pulliam and others. I'll go to the first slide, though. We can skip right to it. Just want to give you some brief updates of things that are happening. So before I jump right into enrollment numbers, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of our faculty, our staff that are going above and beyond for our enrollment efforts. When I tell you that they're meeting often, they are meeting all the time talking about what we can do to enhance and increase our enrollment and form those relationships that we need in our school districts to make sure that we move the needle in those areas. And so as you can see, we're always cautiously optimistic, but right now, our applications obviously are, are up. Our admissions, as it relates to those that we've admitted, are up. And then our new student orientation, we just wrapped up our last new student orientation. We were sitting at over 1,300-plus students registered in that freshman class. That's a really good number and an indicator for us. Still have a lot of work to do to yield those, those students that are out there that have been admitted that we want to get to registration. And so a lot of efforts are focused solely on how do we close the gap in those areas. And so real excited, a lot of people working hard. May interest you to know on the Saluki Commitment and the Saluki Transfer Commitment, so far, 386 admitted students have accepted the funding, and we're really excited about that. Thanks to the Board and thanks to all of you, we're able to make that happen for families here that were looking for ways to pay for their education, taking great advantage of the Saluki Commitment. So really excited. Our transfer students are doing it as well. So our partners over at Logan, Shawnee, Renlake, and in the, in the various areas in the Southern Illinois region are taking advantage of that as well. And so it's a really, really good, good, good piece for us. We are very excited. If you look at the picture to the right, years ago, and we had just a great summer bridge program, and there's a pioneer there, Dr. Seymour Bryson, you know, was really the, the architect of a lot of those programs that brought a lot of students into our university. These are students, in some cases, that did not always have the academic GPA, but they came in in the summer. They worked very hard. We are so glad to have the Seymour, Dr. Seymour Bryson Future Scholars Program. We have been planning this since last fall. We have thirty students that are in that cohort. When I tell you that these students are dynamic, they are just dynamic students. I got a chance to meet with each of our students and their parents on a Zoom call before they arrived. Then I got a chance to meet them again over Dairy Queen and bought them all ice cream over there. And so they, they, this cohort likes ice cream. We spent a lot of money over there buying them ice cream, but got them off to a good start. And, you know, they're, they are here from July 6th to July 30th. And they're all over the place. I have to thank the SIU Foundation. They covered the entire program. Okay, when I say they covered room and board and housing for all of those students, they have covered all of that for those students. So I want to thank the SIU Foundation for providing that support. They're taking college-level courses, earning credit. Very intense summer. There's not a lot of time to, to do anything in, really in a leisure way, except eat ice cream and do some other things, but they are working very hard to make sure that we move them right on to the fall semester. And so very excited about that. On July 23rd, we're going to host our, our open house. It'll be an in-person open house. We're excited about that and, and connecting in with the community, and, and we're going to be promoting that. You'll hear more about that. As you can see from one of the other photos on the left, we still have our mask on there. Back in May, we signed a deal with Carbondale District 95. The idea there is to plant the SIU seed early. We're talking about recruiting elementary and middle school students, so not just our high school students. We're trying to dig a little deeper. If you look on the right side, we've got some kids in our early childhood program. Now, they are from the Southern Region Early Childhood Program. It's a dynamic program. You know, we donated some T-shirts to those students, and wouldn't you know it, they put the T-shirts on, came over with their teachers, and they tried to surprise me, and I wasn't here. And I felt terrible about that. All these little kids here, and I wasn't here. I was out doing some other work. And so I promised to go over there in the fall and, and read to them and go over and talk to them and try and recruit them, because it's, it's early. So next slide, please. Thanks to each of you about, I guess, twenty, twenty-five minutes ago for approving the folks that you're seeing here on our, on our chart. We have some new employees that are going to hit the ground running. You know, we've operated with a lot of interim folks in these positions. I want to thank all the interims that have served in those positions. We now have some permanent folks that are coming in. Really good group that's going to move us to, to greater heights. And so I'm really excited about welcoming each of them. I also want to make sure you know that we have established, or at least through Rob Lopez, who is with our Hispanic Latino staff and faculty council, and then Mr. Lester with our Black Faculty Staff Council. Both of those councils are going to be set up as our new constituency groups. And so we're excited about that. It's going to be some history for our campus to be able to, to have those groups, to have a voice. Really looking forward to work. Been working with them all year, but looking forward to working with them even more and introducing them to you in, in the future. I know you'll be seeing them as well. So really excited about that. Also, this, this fall, I know Mira is excited about this, we're going to be welcoming a lot of new faculty members to our campus. And so they're going to be across all, all different disciplines here on campus. And so we'll be welcoming those faculty members and, and supporting them as, as they hit the ground running. So a lot of, lot of new faces, and then there's some familiar faces that are here as well, but we're really excited to welcome all of them. Next slide. I, I always want to put a piece in here about our, our faculty and our students and all the great things that they do. We've had some, some nice press clippings from Professor Daniel Hummer. He was picked up by the Associated Press and appeared in the news outlets throughout the country, including U.S. News and World Report. Professor Hummer created an exhibit about the evolution of minerals for the American Museum of Natural History in New York City. So again, we have so many faculty doing just incredible things that we, we always want to highlight that. There's another story that ran in the St. Louis Post Dispatch about our project led by anthropology professor Mark Wagner at the Fort Cascasia State Historic Site. The project involved ten students from seven universities. And so, you know, as we talk about not being a best-kept secret and making sure we get these stories out about the wonderful things our faculty are doing and our staff and students, we want to continue to do that. So that, that's exciting for us. The next slide. I've talked about this all year. We finally are about, close to wrapping up our strategic plan. And if you noticed, you heard from the President and Dr. Garish earlier, our top five pillars are closely aligned with our system, strategic plan, items that they're focused on. So we're really excited about that. We're going to be focused heavily on student success and engagement, diversity, equity, and inclusion, research, academics, innovation, sustainability, and partnerships. And so we're really excited. I want to thank our campus for giving us great feedback, all of our faculty, staff, students, alums, community members as well, that all played a part in this. So really excited about it. Our final slide, you'll hear more at the end of our summer about Imagine SIU Carbondale, which will serve really as our strategic plan going forward. So a lot of things happening here. Again, our, our primary focus is on welcoming our students, opening up safely in the fall semester. That seems to be going well. We have a reopening committee that is, is working hard on, on that to make sure that we, we come back and do it in a way that will keep us here. So on that note, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Dr. Cruz, first of all, are there any questions of Dr. Lane? Hearing none, Dr. Cruz.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen here, maybe. There we go. I think you can see that now, correct? Yeah. So my, my topic today is going to be our new Family Medicine Residency Training Program that opened in Alton exactly two weeks ago. On this slide, you see the Program Director, our inaugural set of six resident physicians, and the partners who made this possible over on the right-hand side of that screen. SIU School of Medicine is the sponsoring institution for accreditation purposes and will run the academic program. The hospital sponsor is Alton Memorial Hospital, which is part of BJC Healthcare. And the clinical operation is going to be operated by Southern Illinois Healthcare Foundation from the, the Metro East area, the large set of FQHCs that's there. So it's a great four-way partnership that's, that's being done here. I'll just mention the Program Director, the leader, Dr. Becky Hoffman. I say proudly is a graduate of the SIU School of Medicine and a graduate of the SIU Quincy Family Medicine Residency Training Program. And she did her academic fellowship and got her Master's in Public Health at the University of Missouri in the same fellowship that I did. So that all makes me smile. Six residents a year for three years. You see them here on the slide. The women from left to right are Christina Govas, Naz Kakanen, and Andrea Ramos Richards. The men from left to right are Tyler Wright, Jonathan, Jonathan Cleric, and Tori Pledger. So in the residency training program, you see they all are graduates of a medical school or an osteopathic school. These all happen to have the MD degree, and they hold a temporary, temporary Illinois license to practice medicine. At the end of their intensive training for three years, they'll be eligible to sit for board certification examination through the American Board of Family Medicine. This is number thirty-two residency or fellowship program at the SIU School of Medicine, two in Carbondale, two in Quincy, one in Decatur, one in Alton, and twenty-six in Springfield, with 385 total residents. Actually, we now have eighty-seven family medicine residents right now that we are the sponsoring institution for, for accreditation purposes. And that's one of the largest, if not the largest contingent at any medical school in the United States. It's important because there's a dire shortage of family physicians in, in the United States, and so we're helping to ease that crisis. And I think these residents will be involved integrally in a lot of the program already heard about today when multiple speakers talked about what was going on in the area there. So this is a big fulfiller of our strategic plans. The sixth goal relates to partnerships. And, you know, we're just very, very proud for these four organizations to come together to start such a great new program. And that's my presentation for today.
Any questions of Dr. Cruz? Okay, thank you, Dr. Cruz. Chancellor Pembroke.
Thank you, Chair Gilbert. I'd like to begin as Austin did by welcoming our student trustee. So Maddy, it's great to have you with us. As you look at this first slide, I just wanted to underscore that in May, we did commencements. When it was sunny, we were outside at Corte, as you can see there, with pharmacy in the upper right-hand corner. And when it rained, we went indoors, and we were family-friendly and provided a lot of photography stations. So we continue to make adjustments. People enjoyed both of those formats, and we're trying to figure out how to use the best of those things as we can continue in 2122. If we move to the next slide, my themes today are enrollment, diversity, awards and rankings, and I also want to talk about facilities. So it was interesting, as we think about enrollment, the summer enrollment on the next slide, if we can get to that, was between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent. And all three semesters, fall of 20, spring of 21, and summer of 21, our enrollment was at between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent. So good consistency there. As we look at fall registration coming up, we're up about four percent in those who have registered already, comparing fall 20 to fall 21. Undergraduates were up about 3.4%, graduates were up about 8.6%. And so that continues the theme of particularly growth at the graduate level. We had between eleven and twelve thousand applications this year. That's the second highest in our history. We think that's because of working with our partner EAB Royal. We went test optional, as you know, regarding admissions for this fall, and we expanded our scholarship program. As Chancellor Lane said, the SIU commitment, in our case, the SIUE. As Chancellor Lane said, the SIU commitment, in our case, the SIU E Cougar commitment. Resulted in at about six hundred students who qualified for free tuition and fees. And so we thank the trustees for helping us with that. We have about eighteen percent more students admitted at this time, which is the highest we've ever had. Almost nine thousand students admitted for fall. Spring board deposits, which are kind of our best indicator of who's coming, are up twenty four percent compared to last year. The diversity of our fall twenty one class is great, seventy six percent increase in African American students, twenty one percent in Asians, forty two percent in Hispanics. If you skip down a little bit, you'll see that housing deposits are up fifteen percent. We're actually ha- having the best year for recruiting students who want to live on campus since two thousand seventeen, about two hundred more than a year ago. The only negative on this screen is the transfers down seven percent. As you'll recall, I've reported that community colleges in Illinois were down about fifteen percent last year. So we were expecting that and working toward trying to address it in the future. So at this point, if we're going to project for fall, we would be at about thirteen thousand two hundred, a little above that. With new freshmen, new transfers in the neighborhood of twenty nine hundred students. Next slide. I also wanted to say that as part of our ongoing activities and enrollment. You you may be able to see here, we had thirteen summer camps going on this summer. Everything from art to engineering and band to dance. Have about two hundred and fifty to three hundred students, K to twelve age. And so they're enlivening our campus this summer. Next slide. The second topic I want to mention today has to do with diversity. We want to thank those involved with the Jim and Julie McPike Scholarship Endowment. As you can see there, between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars provided to support women in STEM. Those will go for one year tuition and fee scholarships for juniors or seniors in the areas of engineering. And also in math and science. Also, congratulations to Jessica de Spain and Connie Fry Spurlock for their work in receiving an NEH grant. This has to do with general education tracks, particularly for underserved students, first generation, black students, Latinx, Pell eligible. And in particular, we're looking to have our students working in the communities. I mentioned successful communities collaborative early that Connie directs. So an example of this would be working with the Illinois Extension Office in studying the evolving use of land in Illinois as it moves from rural to suburban or urban settings and the effects from those changes. If we look at the next slide, continuing on diversity, I introduced Coach Samantha Smith earlier. And I just want to congratulate her on putting together a great staff, a diverse staff. I also want to thank Susan Coiman, a professor in anthropology. As you can see, in the summer on our campus, we have archaeological work. There is a dig site that's actually on the campus. And they have been working in two areas, particularly relating to Native American cultures, including middle woodland and Cahokian societies that lived there in the past. Continuing on the next slide. One of the things that we have been studying as it relates to retention of underserved community, particularly black students and particularly black male students. Is that we have a program called GAME, which is Goal Oriented African American Males Excel. We found out that those who were involved in that program were much more likely to be retained. And so we have expanded that program by hiring an additional person. Howard Ramsey is the leader for that program. And now Dr. Donovan Ramon will also be involved with that. I want to say, I hope you'll listen to Segway, those of you who are in our area. The radio program eighty eight point seven on your dial at nine AM Sunday. I'll be talking to Lakeisha Butler regarding her work in in racism education, particularly in pharmacy area. If we move on, third topic, rankings and awards. Great things continue to happen in nursing, as you can see. Number one in Illinois, number seven in the nation for the online nursing education masters. Top two percent in the nation regarding best value, most popular program in nursing. Number five in the nation regarding healthcare and nursing administration and one hundred percent board pass rate. So great things in nursing. Mention one other thing in nursing as we move on. And that is that the online masters in healthcare informatics was ranked third nationally. So that's a wonderful thing. Changing gears completely, the School of Engineering's Cougar Rockets team placed fourth nationally in the competition. As you can see there, other top five teams included Oklahoma State and the University of Tennessee. Continuing on regarding rankings and awards. Congratulations to Corey Byers for the excellence in faculty screenwriting recognition. To Dr. Saman Mishra for being one of the top faculty research papers at the Association for Education and Journalism and Mass Comm. And congratulations to Dr. Ashton Spino, the Croatian Science Foundation Grant and being named as SIU's Bonnie Lindsey New Investigator Award. Finally, finishing up with facilities, just wanted to highlight a few things. We will be unveiling a new digital, i.e. video and sound equipment in the Vidalabing Center. That's going to go in in August. That will help not only with our athletic events there, but our commencements and our convocations. Particularly beginning the year with the the new students. School of Engineering, I hope you've had a chance to see the new atrium work, state of the art lab. That was a donation from the Enterprise folks. Second floor of Lovejoy, if you want to see that with stacks, you better get there quickly. We're clearing that out so that students will have more places to get together and talk. And finally, I hope that you, those of you who can make it, will attend the nine AM August ninth ribbon cutting for the SIU School of Dental Medicine new clinic. We've talked about that before. That's a general anesthesia clinic, which will give us a lot of great capabilities. I'll finish with a screenshot of of our golden grads. Those who graduated nineteen seventy one or before have been coming back to campus because of COVID. We did that as a virtual ceremony this year. We had eighty people from seventeen states. And I think one of the things that we have learned during COVID is that sometimes virtual events can actually attract more than on ground. So we'll be trying to do a combination of virtual and on ground ceremonies in the year to come. So with that, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pembroke. Any questions of Dr. Pembroke? Okay, hearing none. At regular board meetings, thirty minutes will be reserved to receive comments or questions from members of the public and employees of the university. Speakers' comments or questions should not exceed five minutes. Persons wishing to speak shall contact the executive secretary of the board. The executive secretary of the board shall maintain a roster of those seeking to speak and shall call the speakers in order. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers today?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Yu Ting Lee.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, SIU Board of Trustees, guests and attendees. I'm here for three reasons. First, I would like to introduce myself as the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two SIUC Faculty Senator President. Second, on the behalf of the faculty senator, I would like to express the support for our new chancellor, Dr. Austin Nain, and the direction in which he is guiding SIUC. Third, I wish to show with you the importance of the faculty and shared governance. As you know, my name is Yu Ting Lee. You can call me YTT, psychologist, faculty of psychology. And I'm the new president. I want to take a moment to thank our previous officer, Dr. Marcus Oldham. And also, let you know there are two other current officers. Vice President of the Faculty Senator, Dr. Rader, and the Secretary, Mike Gozowski. And these individual may attend may attend Board of Trustees meeting on my behalf at some point. I look for, we look forward to working with you and other contingencies. I believe in services, transparencies and collaboration. Second, I've been here for SI, I've been at SIUC for six years in different capacities. The campus, that means the SIUC campus, has experienced many types of challenges and difficulties in the past years. Such as huge decline of enrollment and academic quality and ranking. Loss of many faculty members, almost four hundred twenty five faculty members. Low campus morale and unilateral top down decisions with little, almost no truly shared governance. However, since the board hired Chancellor Nain and President Daniel Mohani last year. We have begun moving strategically in the right direction. For example, we've been making progress in shared governance and strategic planning. In my observation, Chancellor Nain has been very active. Very actively engaged with our faculty members. And he is very willing to listen and learn from our faculty members. And share information such as such as budget information, address equity issues. His strategic plan and institutional ranking are timely and needed. We are very grateful to you, the Board of Trustees, for these hires from the outside last year. Third, as a research to university, it is very important for SIU Carbondale Campus Administration to collaborate with faculty members and to support shared governance. Our academic excellence and research success largely or greatly depends on our faculty member and shared governance. Why? Here are two examples. Example one, in nineteen forty eight, former president Delight Morris came here with two strategical goals in his mind. First, to build a school of excellence in academics and research. And second, to enhance economic and culture of eternity in Southern Illinois. He accomplished these two goals by working with faculty member and Board of Trustees, like you guys. Example two, American higher education, including Association of Governing Board of Colleges and Universities. And many presidents across the nation basically agreed that governing with knowledge and confidence must be accomplished by working with faculty, collaboration with faculty members. Now, last month, there was one article which I'm going to send to you. Article by Lynn Nina Eisenberg talked about what it means by shared governance. Well, sharing governance involves primarily involves three group, main groups, triads. The board, administration, faculty. Shared governance means shared responsibility, shared accountability. And promoting collaboration by means of communication and mutual respect. In summary. While the board is our legal authority in process about all business matters. Faculty members and shared governance plays very important role in checks and balance in academic programs, policies. And other aspect that impact universities. Through daily interactions with our administrative colleagues. We are all equal partners united for one common purpose. To serve, to walk, to lead together for our students and other stakeholders or contingencies in Southern Illinois. Therefore, collaboration and mutual respect, not unilateral, unilateral, we top down decision. Among the board, the administration and faculty were determined SIUC's success in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you for your comments. Madam Secretary, the next speaker.
Our last speaker is Dr. Anne Fletcher.
Dr. Fletcher?
Good afternoon. Some of you know me, some of you don't. So for those of you who don't, my name is Anne Fletcher and I am a professor in the School of Theater and Dance. I'm here today in my capacity as president of the SIUC Faculty Association. Speaking of shared governance and Dr. Lee and I did not share our remarks, although we heard that we were each speaking today. The Faculty Association works with administration in settling and even preventing grievances. Implementing the collective bargaining agreement, navigating reorganization, infamous Article Nine and more. We are currently in collective bargaining. Employing interest based bargaining, the joint team's relationship remains open and friendly. I'm here, I'm going to be a one note pony. I am here because I want to urge you to take the opportunity. Since for the last two years, the SIU budgets have not been available in September. I'm here to urge you to build in meaningful salary increases for faculty. Except for promotion and tenure, faculty have received in total a two percent increase in salary across the last decade. Salary compression has become acute. Morale is low. While I recognize that feelings are not facts, faculty perception is that we are simply not a priority. Faculty numbers have decreased by at least half in my time here. I have been here twenty years. Totalling approximately, as Dr. Lee said, four hundred and twenty five. Arguably, the student body has shrunk proportionately. However, in terms of class preparation, office hours, committee assignments, recruitment and retention, other service activities and meaningful research, work actually for those of us who remain has increased. For years, we have jokingly called this workload creep. There are fewer faculty to complete daily operational tasks. I urge you to take the time to build salary increases into the budget that you will have for consideration in September. Students and faculty, teaching and learning are the heart and soul of any university. We hope that SIU will recognize the faculty and stand committed to those who have committed themselves to SIU. Thank you very much for your time. I am always available for questions and I know that I meet with some of you regularly. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. Our next item is the call for the omnibus motion. The trustees had approximately ten days to study the items on the agenda. A certain number of items are routine or self explanatory, so as to save time, we act upon them in one motion and one vote. Madam Secretary, please read the items suggested for the omnibus motion. And I understand items of, is it G, F and G are going to be voted on separately?
That would leave items H through double A.
Is there any discussion on items H through double A? Is there a motion to approve the items for the omnibus motion?
So moved.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. I'm going to ask the secretary to take a roll call vote.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Ginovici?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharver?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
I declare the motion to approve the omnibus motion has been passed. The next item is Board Item F, Report of Purchases, Orders and Contracts, March, April and May, twenty twenty one, SIUC. Drive a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We're now going to ask for a roll call on item F.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis? Curtis?
Yes.
Genovese?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Tedrick?
I recuse.
Walters?
Yes.
I declare that the motion has passed. Board Item G, Report of Purchases, Purchases, Orders, and Contracts, March, April, May, twenty-twenty-one, for SIUE. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second here.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We're now going to ask for a roll call vote on Item G.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Genovese?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Tedrick?
I recuse.
Walters?
Walters.
Walters?
Oh. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has passed. That concludes the business of the Board of Trustees today. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board is planned to be held September sixteenth at SIU Edwardsville. I hope we can have, have it there in person. A lot of it depends upon the situation with COVID and this, the Delta, Delta variants that is, that has now spreading across the country. A news conference will be held immediately after the conclusion of the University Park meeting at this table. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please take the roll, Ms. Whittington.
Clinton?
Yes.
Genovese?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Tedrick?
Yes.
And Walters?
And before I adjourn the meeting, I guess for the record, Luke, we were able to do this in a meeting pursuant to the Governor's executive order.
That's correct. The Open Meetings Act allows if the Governor or IDPH has declared an emergency or a declaration of a natural disaster, public health issues, that public bodies are able to convene remotely like we did, and that was extended recently by the Governor.
Okay. All right, that concludes this board meeting. I want the, the board members to remain seated for the University Park Board meeting. The Chancellor Pembroke will lead. So the meeting is adjourned. Chancellor Pembroke? Chancellor Pembroke?
I think he's on.
You're muted.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to propose that we approve of the University Park Board members, the information that has been forwarded to you. You have a supervisory role in the appointment of those individuals, and so I propose that we approve the names of the individuals that you have received.
Any questions of Chancellor Pembroke? And do I have a motion to approve those members?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Whittington, please take the roll.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Pembroke?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
Yes.
And Walters?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the meeting of the University Park Board.
We need approval of minutes?
Minutes, yeah. Oh, approval of minutes?
Could we have someone make a nomination, a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I do.
Second? Thank you. Do you want to do the roll call vote on that, Misty?
Sure.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Pembroke?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And Simmons has lost his connection. Tedrick?
Yes.
And Walters?
Okay.
Okay.
The minutes have been approved. Anything further, Chancellor Pembroke, regarding the University Park Board?
Thank you for taking care of that item of business. We appreciate it.
All right, that concludes all of our business today. I want to thank each of the board members again and wish them a great rest of the day and, and a good weekend. And there will be a press conference immediately following this, this meeting. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It looks like we have one reporter with us, Benji from WSIU.